All right, we're going to call this regular council meeting to order Monday, June 16th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. And it's close enough. And we ask you to turn your cellphones off or silence them. And we get a roll call, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Prentice?
Here. Stand and take your hats off. Please. The flag. The flag of the regions. Please wave. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for a minute, please.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. And Lord, we just, we just thank you for your blessing on this city and that you would continue with blessing the citizens and the city and our finances. And Lord, we're grateful for what you've done. So we just ask for your wisdom tonight as the council discusses and votes on several issues that affect the future of this city. Jesus.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Approval of the agenda, get a motion, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will, we're going to lay over a couple of things, but we'll do that later when we get to it. We can do that, right?
Yes.
All right, public comment. If you'd like to stand, give your name. You get three minutes. All right. I think we'll give you another chance. Thank you. All right, approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting held June 2nd, 2025. Motion, please.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, all opposed, nobody opposed. Okay, report of officers, approval of claims to be paid June, May 31st to June 13th, 2025 for the amount of?
Motion.
Second.
Any discrepancy? All right, Tracy, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes. Attorney's report.
No report.
No report. We got two of them here. Can't get a report out of you two? All right. Okay, report from our officers. Sonya.
Yes, Mayor. I have just a couple of quick things. I don't want to steal any thunder from the girls waiting in the audience that are going to speak to us tonight, but the first is I want to tell you that Belinda Smith, who owns the building at door, is thrilled about what is happening tonight. So I haven't gotten to talk to her, and she wanted me to let you know that. She's so grateful that you're here to talk on the topic that you guys are going to blend on. And then also, I just wanted to let the council know, we promised that we would update the residents periodically about the even odd parking. I want to report back that we have received the signs. So Steve's crew will be working on those in the next couple of weeks. As of April 21, our ordinance did change. So at this point, we've just kind of been issuing informational notifications from our police department. But once all of those signs are, we do intend to start enforcing the even odd parking regulations again so that our streets can remain as safe as possible for our emergency services. Other than that, the only other thing I wanted to mention on is, next week, we have a special meeting. It is really only to cover the approval process that is needed for an IDOT project. Because of IDOT's timelines on how you have to post things, has to get posted on their webpage for two weeks, and then get posted again for another open period, then there's a comment period, we had to coordinate a special meeting. So we did all that we could 12 weeks out from the project, but really this was the only option. So we have to have a quick special meeting next week, Monday, at 4:15. Tracy will ensure that everything is posted properly, but this is in reference to the RVI funding and the amount of $521,000 that we want to make sure we get designated to an IDOT approved project. Although we have to pay that back. So please, don't forget about me. I will send out a reminder next month. And that's all I've got for you tonight, Mayor.
I got, what were we doing with the banner signs and the flags and stuff? When's that going to happen?
Oh, you're talking the code, those flags? So a lot of it has to be sent to let the business owners know they have to take those down.
All right, we're doing that now. We're not finding anybody yet, but we're in the process of letting everybody know that all them flags got to be down. Okay, because that's, you're up. So, okay, just checking, make sure we know. All right, who's got this? Steve?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, started off with streets. We got the Rockford sign up on the last pick on Berryville Road in front of Fitness Dome. So if you're driving that way, you'll see that up now. Door Road, we did some temporary straking out there. I know our paint won't last as long until we can get some thermal plies going so you can at least see the roads now. We started on Willoughby, we're waiting on some more paint to come in. Sherman Williams has been trying to find as much as he can force. We painted the curves on Boulevard, most of the trees, put up new flags on Boulevard. Side note on the flags, the manufacturer of the flag poles we currently have are no longer making them, and they're no longer making parts to fix them. So we're currently in the process of looking for alternatives on different poles or how we can change it up out there, keep the flags out there, keep going with them. We helped out with the PD for the Memorial Day Parade, everything went well. We have four summer help this year. They have all been doing great. They're getting the park moving in like a day and a half, two days. So that's been freeing us up quite a bit to get a lot of their projects done. We're finishing up the cat station repair on South Morris Street. We just need to do some blacktop work on it, and hopefully if the rain holds off, we'll get that done tomorrow. We cleaned up the two lots on Miller Street that are owned by the city now. We cut down all the trees and brushed. We're just going to do a little bit of final grading on it, and then we can start mowing them regularly. We did another cleanup on Buddyville, a bunch of branches and stuff that fallen over the winter, so it was kind of hard to brush all that tractor back there, so we cleaned that all up again. We moved the big cement blocks at our Eastern Building location for the fence and contractor. They're going to be here Thursday, Friday this week to move the fence and shrink that footprint out for us. We cut the trees, again, down with the Eastern Building location behind the lean tube and buildings A and B to make room for the lock repair. We want about five to six foot out behind the building, so if we can get back in there and nice and clean. We took a tree down on Marvin Street that was split at the base, you could see right through it. We're still pothole patching, but the good thing is it's reasonable, so it definitely lasts a lot longer. Got the first round of roadside mowing done. And then next week, we're going to be renting a stump grinder. We called a bunch of these anonymous trees that we have taken down ourselves and helped so we can get the stumps removed on the right of ways. Keep them up on the parkway. Like I said, the summer help has been knocking that out great. Cut a lot of trees down along Door Road for a better view along the park for the entrance way and everything. I talked about that a little bit before, we're going to throw a pocket to keep it maintained as well. The bathrooms have been locked in the park, and porta-pots have been set in place for about two weeks now because of the vandalism in the bathrooms down there. I don't know what the difference is between our bathrooms and the porta-pots, but I don't know, because they're out in more view where you can see all the way around, they have less room, so I'm not going with, hopefully it stays that way. And then disc golf, we're still working on getting fairways done with, so next week.
Thank you, Father. We'd like to thank all of our departments for Memorial Day Parade. That was excellent. It was a very, very nice job done by everybody here. I know, Chief, you had to get things moved around to get this done. Thank you, and our police department, our street department, so everybody was putting hands on there. So we'd like to thank you all again. All right, we are going to go, anything else on Department heads? All right, we're going to give Julie a chance here, presentation from the representative with National Audubon regarding mural painting. Stand up, would you please give your names and?
Sure. My name is Jennifer Caroja. I'm West Mississippi Audubon, which is a chapter located in Rockford, Illinois. It's a chapter of the National Audubon. And I also want to say that I grew up in the area, grew up in Roscoe, attended Perry Hill, K through eight. Spent a lot of time at the South Boyne Library, which is a project in South Boyne, very near and near my heart, community I grew up in.
And I'm Julie Urn, the executive director at Nature at the Confluence. And I'm really pleased to be working with Jennifer. A little over a year ago, we started this conversation with Sonya of the idea of getting a bird mural in the Shreve East of Boyne. And now we've talked about it long enough that we feel really confident with this plan that we've put in front of you. So I'll let Jennifer lead the way.
Sure. So I just want to talk a little bit about the Audubon mural project, and I don't know if everyone's got a packet, but there's a lot of beautiful photos in here of the work in Rockford already. But it is a public art initiative that was started by National Audubon in New York City by a gentleman named Adi Gittler. He was a gallery owner, I know his gallery has since closed, but he's the one who started the project. And his goal was to create murals for all of the species that are impacted by climate change through National Audubon's Survival by the Curies Report, which is currently 389 species. I believe he's had just over 200 murals right now. There's been some offshoots of the program. The Rockford program is actually, the Rockford Extension is actually the biggest, the second biggest one in the country right now. There's a lot of cities catching up. I'm a little bit of a competitive person, though, so I'm excited to expand in South Boyne and keep the project locally going. And the great thing about this, as I started to talk about it, is that it's just, it's grown tremendously in Rockford. I just want to share with you, like, the project is really, if you're familiar with Audubon and John Reed's Audubon, he depicted all the great artworks a lot of people are familiar with. And so one of the murals in New York City actually is that swallow-tailed kite. And then the artist took and painted all different birds within the wings of that bird. Just, I saw the mural in person, it's absolutely incredible. But to talk about the Rockford project, it first started in 2018. I had reached out to Adi and National Audubon and said, I want to bring this to Rockford. We had very little murals in Rockford at the time. As little did I know that I was in competition with Bill Rockford, who was going to launch their first mural. I forgot what it was called, the mural festival? Yeah, creative, the senior. Like, when I first met with them, I was like, oh, your project doesn't really mesh with what we're doing. And as soon as I had my permit before them, they said, hey, do you want to join our project? So I was able to do that. But the first mural was actually this yellow-headed blackbird, which is up in the corner here. I knew the artist was going to do this mural, and I asked her if she would, literally adding a bird to it. It was airport lady, yeah. And you know that reference, but Therese was actually very welcoming. We got that. National Audubon recognized it right away. So National Audubon has been great in the recognition of this program, and they actually have 1.5 million followers on their social media accounts. So this is the one that we got added to the Creative Festival, which is the Baltimore Oriole. All of these birds are very common backyard birds that we try to bring attention to so people can identify with them and realize, hey, if we don't start doing things different, we might lose these very beautiful backyard birds. I've worked with Lincoln Middle School and Swedish American, U of U Health, where I am employed, and partnered with the United Way to do another mural. I love the collaboration work, so it's been great to work with Julie and Sonya. Then we have this beautiful mural on State Street that depicts the official city bird in Rockford, which is the parrot and falcon. Justin actually did two murals for that, for us. This one is incredible, like, when you see this goshawk's head, and it's just, he did this in spray paint, and he did this in a day and a half. So it's just incredible work that these artists do. So, let's talk about South Boyne. Oh, wait, no, I had to finish. And I want to, like, just point out this. So this right here, these two murals are actually covering windows, and this is important to remember when I talk about the building next door. So that's actually my daughter, and she painted on a material called Audubon, or aluminum, and it's what some city signs are made out of. So high durability, it's not going to work like plywood or wood on that frame. In fact, this has been up for three years now, and I just happened to look at it the other day and it was branding. I mean, it just, like, I sealed it really nice, and it just has held up very good in the weather. One of the things that Rockford has done to bring attention to these murals is host mural walks. So I average about 26 people on these walks. People come from all over. I actually, last year had a, I can't remember, she was from South Dakota or North Dakota, but grew up in Rockford years ago, was back for a high school reunion, and wanted to schedule this as part of their reunion tour, if you will, for a woman that had come back. So we get requests from all over the country really to host mural walks for people, so it is an attraction to get people to come to our communities. And then the next page really depicts, from a few follow social media trends, for our mural walks. And this is on, we didn't boost these posts at all, we didn't put any money into it, we just had ads for them, but 9.7,000 people of those mural rock walks reached, and we had over 422 responses. So at that point, I actually had to start saying, you can sign up for these, because I can't have, like, 30 to 40 people showing up, because it's too big of a crowd. And then we do have a mag, this is similar, actually Audubon, National Audubon copied me and uses a little bird icon on the Google Maps, too, so people can go to our website, click on the bird icon, and figure out where the mural is that they want to see. And for us on our page, I'm definitely adding South Boyne murals. And again, want to just highlight the National Audubon recognition that we get. They have done several articles for us on this. Last summer, we were in the National Audubon Magazine, and we actually had a full, full big page spread about Rockford in that magazine. I got tons of emails after that, again, from all over the country, people wanting to know about the project. So National Audubon has done wonderful in terms of supporting us on this and sharing it across the country. And then next month, I'm considered a storyteller at the National Audubon Leadership Conference, and I'm going to be sharing our project in my second full year, which is going to happen in South Boyne at that as well. So, and then for South Boyne, if you see this page here, the two locations that we've worked out in terms of selection are at Nature at the Confluence. Now, the secret building we are not going to paint, it will be the Audubon's material, it'll be mounted with cedar, because you just, I mean, cedar's beautiful, you don't really want to paint on it. So we're going to make sure it's Audubon, and then the building next door. The two artists that are already committed and talked, I've talked with Justin and Brett in the last couple of days. Justin did that beautiful parrot and falcon mural for us, and he also did the goshawk mural. But his work is heavily focused on birds of prey, and so it needs to have a confluence because there's that bald eagle master going to focus on bald eagle and a couple other species on the mural. It's beautiful work, and it's, like I said, he's super fast, so it's just amazing to watch him output. He's a nationally recognized artist. And then Brett Whitaker, he is local, but also widely recognized in his work. He's done large-scale projects on parking lots, and he's also done some stuff for the City of Byron. So for those two murals, the approximate costs are $25,000. I know Julie submitted an application, and I forgot what it was called.
Yes, we submitted the application for the maximum request around $10,000, which would cover a fraction of the total cost of $25,000 for the two murals. So we're asking you to consider this really cool opportunity to connect to a national organization to make this not only a public art, but an attraction, an extension of Nature at the Confluence into the streets of South Boyne. The Abbey Roads mural would be visible from Derrable. We already have Jared Peterson, a principal at Blackhawk Elementary, interested in getting the students involved in art projects and related to this. So to make all this possible, it's $25,000 that we need, and that is our request, as much as the city council is able to support it. And I did have a phone call with Commissioner Prentice earlier this week. He is really excited about the project and loves the idea of public art in South Boyne.
Yeah, I thought I was just talking with Julie beforehand, essentially we're excited about this, but in terms of how Nature at the Confluence can bring the murals into their education and programming, we have presentations there that come out, you know, mural walk and a bird walk, and you'll see those kind of urban bird, birding, if you will, and then see birds on their property that they've restored. So it's a really cool opportunity.
Any idea what kind of bird would be painted?
Well, for Nature at the Confluence, we're going to focus on the bald, American bald eagle, which, because they have a nest there. But we're also going to do, on the one side, some grassland birds to tie it into the Audubon mural project for the climate threatened species. And then for this one next door, if you're familiar with whooping cranes, there's only several hundred in North America. They're federally endangered, a highly sensitive bird, and we would love to, when we work on this mural, get the Crane Foundation in Wisconsin involved and bring them down for kind of unveiling, and they can bring their whooping crane mascot and do some crane education while they're down here.
Cool.
And the mascot is a live whooping crane bird, not a person dressed?
Oh, no, it is a person. I don't know. I think that's a big, big bird, but they do have a costume, someone who comes down in a whooping crane costume, they've got surgery. But if they have a live bird, we'll definitely get it here.
Mayor, I just want to add, so it's been a pleasure working through this really long process, you know, but when we started, it was more than a year ago, because we were hopeful we might even be able to get it done in the season last year. We just couldn't get enough, you know, of the right partners on the table at that time. But prior to Commissioner Prentice being over the Park and Rec Advisory Board, it was Commissioner Moore. So Commissioner Moore, could you talk a little bit about how long this has been on your radar?
Well, we started looking at this one at the beginning of my last term, so we're talking about five years now that we've worked at this project, we're dealing with Candy Roads next door, hoping to do that building first. We ended up doing the one in the park, and I just think it's a fantastic opportunity for the city to bring people in.
Yeah, I feel like we did a lot of work to tie our schools, we wanted to just do a mural really quick and beautify some spaces, tie them to City Park. We have this showcase kind of building right now that is on our main drag, and all of the right people at the table. So anyway, it's been a pleasure working with you girls. Please, Jen, let's continue to hang out even after these models are suddenly done. But we'll get to the, we'll get to the item later on the agenda unless you have any.
Yes, if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You got any questions? No, I think we all feel it's a good idea, you know, and I do. But I mean, if I should cover up a building next to us. But yeah, that's, I think we're all in favor, but we'll see when we vote, but then we'll figure out what we got for funds, and we'll have to discuss that, but we'll see how it goes. Hey, but I appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you for your time.
Jennifer, Julie, thank you. I think we took care of one and two there.
We did.
And so now we're going to, we're going to move on to three. Yeah, thanks, thank you. We'll move on to the presentation from Caroline Quizum with Fairgram regarding a sewer study. Caroline?
Yeah, you can just chair speak. Great. If you want to, you guys feel free to. Sorry, you're off. Hello, everyone. My name is Jeremy. I'm a project manager at Fairgram. I've been working long here on this rate study, and I'm helping with other stuff for lift stations and some analysis. Very excited to be here. I'm sure this is going to be a different topic than the painting and all those stuff. It's a little bit different reflection, but it's interesting, so. First of all, why we're here, as you all know, the request that we got from Sonya and the rest of the team is to revisit the existing rates because of the fact that we lost a major industrial loser. So we wanted to check if the current financial situation is suitable for moving forward and considering the projects that you guys are expecting to make care of some important problems in the system. The goal here is to make sure that we first understand the system, second, we have fair rates for both residential and businesses, and also prepare for future costs, and also make sure that we are maintaining the system right. So what we've done, first of all, we looked at the past three years of data, we looked at the revenue, we looked at the costs, the expenditures, depreciation, and distant debt services. And you can see here, this is the, it's a bar chart showing the, this is 2020, 2022, the blue, and then orange, 2023, and then 2024. Is this great? As you can see, you've had some drop the last year. These are the numbers for all the costs that you need to cover this revenue. And immediately, you can see that the system utilities operating about $600,000. So without any, considering any future products, system needs money. That's the first conclusion. Now, what's coming next is the, there are two products that we included in the announces. The first one was the Class A bisalts upgrade, that's Jeff's favorite. And then the second one is the lift station improvement. Again, we had to revisit the costs. I'm sure you guys saw these, but the numbers are different because we have to revisit them, reflect the existing markets, costs, okay? So we also included those in analyzing the comp rates. There's something we do, and we were doing this for a lot of communities, and something we look at first thing, it's a variable, we call it the IVA criteria for fiscal sustainability, which gives you what should be your minimum, minimum revenue to cover yourself, right? And it's a function, not to look at the equations, what's the functional? What's your revenue? What's your expenses? And what's your debt service, including the existing and potential future? Doing that, your minimum required revenue is around probably $4 million. And that's, remember, right now we're at like 2.8 last year, so we're short. So we look at different scenarios. Now, this is your current, 2.8 million. Do we need one scenario is to say, okay, do we want to cover 100% depreciation, which is, no one does that, because we like to look at this number. Or what is that other number that we should be looking at? No one can cover 100%, no one wants to put the money aside and not use it, considering, you know, the existing financial situation. So what we did, we said, okay, what's that minimum revenue? And then we translated it back into what you can cover with that revenue. Does that make sense? And that translated into about 38% depreciation you can cover, essentially. What this means is that you need to increase your revenue by about 45%. That's not surprising, we've seen it in other communities, and it's true, in fact, if you want to maintain yourself and not deal with surprises. So what we did, we took that number and we translated it into rate increases. Obviously, we don't want to hit the customers that are in this for one strike, so we phased it out over five years, and that's what it looks like. This blue line is your existing 217 projections, and that's where you want to be at with the new rates. First, the action might be, what if we took out the bisalts, the class A bisalts, right? So we did run that scenario here, with and without. That's what it looks like if you included that product, and that's what it looks like if you didn't include it. The interesting thing in your system is that the biggest cost is to do with existing debt services. It's massive, it's huge, there are lots in that, not with future products. So even if you took it out, you don't see a major change in rate increases. Does that make sense? All good? Now, non-meters, this is for metered users, and for 100, 1,000, to be honest, right? You have two different ways for people to run. Now, for non-metered users, it was a little bit more challenging to analyze, because it was interesting, I felt that the non-metered users are, I don't want to put it straight, but they're underpaying compared to the metered users. So they're not paying enough, and it's not fair for the metered users. So what we did, we took what is that increase we needed, you know, percent increase we needed for metered users, and we applied it to non-meters at flat rate, just to make things simple. This is what it looks like, again, with and without the bisalts upgrade, and here's where we're at. We projected it for five years, specifically we do not recommend going after that. Three to five years max is your rates. You have to revisit it, because things change. See what happened now, right? You get these weird regulatory requirements, like the NARCA, that you have to deal with. So you need like the NARCA that you have to deal with. So you need to revisit this content constantly. I think, I share with you, Sonia, that Excel sheet is very simple. Now you have it. You can simply plug in the numbers, and it'll give you what the rates should be, what to do. You don't have to do the math here. Now, one of the other requests that you had to us is, how do we compare to other communities? Before you look at this, want to be very careful. This is not apples to apples. Each community is different. You have all industrial consumers, some have plenty of them. There are some others who are expecting a lot of projects, so they have to cover it with the rates. But to give you a sense of where you're at, we put this together. Again, I don't say this as a one-to-one comparison. So it's interesting that all the other communities have a base rate, and you guys don't have a base rate. So if you would compare that per 1,000 gallon, you would be high, but then considering that, they still got three points, like a $50 for water, so we had to do the proportions, the figure. So right now, you're here, and you don't have a base rate. Once we add the proposed development or proposed rates, you'll be somewhere here. So you're still within the other communities, not going crazy on, right? Now, when you look at this, it's a moment for you to start thinking, okay, if this, if this whole chunk is your per 1,000 gallons, and this is theirs, right? But you have this big base rate. And again, it's up to you. You know your community the most, what makes the most sense to cover this. You can phase it out over 10 years, but that's not, never recommended. The money gets more expensive as you wait. It's hard truth. We deal with this exact situation and same reaction in every community, but it is with this, right? You got to cover yourself. So with that, I'd like to have you guys, you know, think about this once you're ready. I said we'll be to update the ordinance and go ahead. That's all.
That's $24, that's $24 a thousand?
Yes. And that's like a...
What is it, what's, what's the normal use on a family of four? I don't know. What's the normal use, how many thousands of gallons do they use?
So I guess I can answer it, too, but you typically, if you're engineering, you figure 100 gallons per person per day. So if there's a family of four, it's 400 gallons per day times about 30 days. So 12,000.
So you would have 12 times 24. So that's almost 260 a month.
Well, but a lot of them are less than that. That's, that's...
Yeah, but I'm just saying...
That's our engineering number that we use for capacity wise.
That's extremely conservative.
But I don't, you know, we could look at our average billing and kind of see what bills will look like. I think most of the bills are around the $70 mark right now. So yeah, they're going to be 100-ish.
Well, if it's 100, I don't see any problem. I mean, most people...
But it's, when she showed the base rate, so every, most communities have a base rate, so they're guaranteeing their floor. So every user has a guaranteed floor, where you're going to guarantee that you're never going to go below that level. We don't have one, and I've never pushed for one, because I feel better about the people who are using more water pay more, people who use less pay less. Because what you're doing with that base rate is, you're guaranteeing your floor, but everybody's paying that same floor price.
All those communities have a base rate?
Yeah. So they have a floor. They are not going to go below that. We do have a risk of going below that, because if people are more conservative of the water, they're going to use less. That's why, you know, we hear people wanting to water their grass and that, but we're not getting sewer. But we still have leaky areas that create that problem that still gets in there. I think I pointed out two meetings ago that we have a, have a lot of water that's coming in that's unaccounted for, unbilled. That doesn't mean it came from our residents. It can come from a lot of places, but there's always that opportunity, too.
So what's a non-built, non-metered, what do they...
Well, I think we're usually billing about what the average would be. They bill it per month, but I think the average has been around 1.2 to 1.4 million gallons a day. We're receiving between 1.6 and 2 million gallons a day. That's part of the reason why I like, I should be, I report what I, we see at the trailer plant. I probably need to get to down, and I do my reports, so I can report the comparison to what we're billing for versus what we, what we see coming into the plant. But it's always been a big discrepancy, and other communities see that, too. But, you know, for, I think it's been three years that we've experienced those increases in just operating materials. Lab is a, is a great place. The requirements for testing haven't changed a lot, but the cost to do that testing in-house, which means labor hasn't changed, you know, huge now, but the reagents and equipment and everything just skyrocketed on this. So we haven't, those rate increases we've done over the last couple of years aren't catching up for what we saw from the after-COVID effect.
So you're saying that we're, just looking at the numbers there, it's going to double? Right? It's going to, everybody's going to double?
Yeah.
What's, what do a non-metered user, what their...
Well, that was what she showed. It's like about $129 a month.
How much?
At the highest. After five years, it'd be $129. Is that correct?
Yes, if you projected over five years.
If you projected over five years, not initially, but it will get up to, I mean...
I can't get to that right now, but that's that number. But we're showing you that projected is including like inflation. So the exact number is about the 120-ish, 23?
I think the thing that shocked me the most is I really believe in Class A sludge, and would really like the opportunity down the road to put some numbers together as far as what our value of our sludge being sold would be. I really thought that we would need to exclude that, but recently, I saw this a little bit ahead of you. I'm surprised how little difference it makes on our, our total cost, especially when you look at that, the equipment we took out of the project was just under $1 million, and now it's projected to cost 3.7, which, until I saw this last week, I hadn't even known that number. And yet, it has, has significant, I mean, it's dollars. It's real dollars for every person, every community member, but I thought it'd be more than what it actually is going to be.
Can you talk a little bit, and Jeff, I know that you know this, and we've talked about it. Can you talk about the benefit of Class A? Why anybody would want to buy?
Okay. Class A allows us to land, apply it, sell it. We don't have to control where it goes, how it's applied, how it's incorporated. Class B is what we have right now. We have to pay for the proper sludge haulers to apply it. We have to make sure they incorporate it within 24 hours. It can't be stored anywhere offsite. It has to be taken and applied immediately. And all that needs to be tracked, as well as notifying neighbors where it's being applied and so forth. Class A allows us, it's gonna, I guess the best way to put it is like pasteurizing milk. It's going to sanitize it, keep it clean and safe. It'll allow us, we would do that with our process, using an acid and lime to create a chemical reaction that'll heat it up to 120 degrees. And at that point, at over 30 minutes, it pasteurizes, it kills all the, any, anything that's in there, any pathogens in there would be dead. That would allow us to, we could apply it to our parks as fertilizer with that. We could apply it, wouldn't need to be incorporated. We could sell it to farmers. Farmers with the lime activated with acid breaks down faster, so if they need a, a quick change in their pH in their farm fields, that's going to have a higher value to it. Initially, I had thought, back when we were still proposing, considering doing that, I felt that if we started out by selling it for the cost of the acid, the cost of the lime and that, the extra cost that we would do for the treatment process would be saved because we weren't paying the trucking. Farmers would come, pick it up, haul it to their field on their dime instead of us paying for it. Now, the dime that's changed is, is that trucking, that disposal, that handling has gone to a prevailing wage law, which has raised its, some say, I know it's at least 30%, some say it's almost double the cost of their sludge disposal. You know, it, I don't, I don't know that for sure. But the, you know, we have some costs. I think if you look at the, the real world, look at the fertilizer going on your lawns, this can be applied on lawns, too. That cost has gone up a lot, and it has in the farm fields. So the nutrients, the phosphorus, we're removing a lot more phosphorus now than we used to, so there's more of that in sludge. There's nitrogen in the sludge. It's more readily available for the plants to uptake than your synthesized synthetic byproducts from the fuel industry and other places.
But, you know, that's all interesting, but I think what...
We're going to be able to sell it for something bad.
But I think people want to know is, what difference would it make if we did have that? What difference would it make in that price?
On the Class A sludge?
Yeah. So the one on the left is with Class A sludge, and the one on the right is without. I, I think that the most important thing, looking at all the presentation over the last, you know, six months now, it's been, when we originally talked about Class A sludge as being part of this treatment plan, it was estimated to be a million dollar project. That's now 3.7. When we found out that we discharged to the Rock River and we had to do something right now, that was about five, six years ago, Jeff, maybe even seven, when we had that, that discharge to the Rock River, and the EPA notified us that we had to correct it immediately, the estimate for the project was $5 million to upgrade lift stations one and two. Now it's 7.7. Like, I know that it is hard, because, trust me, I live here, too. My grandson, our tight income as well. But like, what, what we put into this plant is, we have, it's only getting more expensive.
When we were sitting here in value engineering and all that stuff there, we were sitting here, and we were telling these residents and ourselves that they were going to pay for a $35 million sewer plant. And that million dollars meant so much on each bill that they were going to get billed.
That's the blue line, Mayor.
Yeah, I know. And, but I'm just saying that, at that time, that's why we didn't do it at that time. And I remember, there was all of us, we're sitting here, and we're talking about, you know, everybody's bill's going to double or triple once we voted in that sewer plant that we needed. We couldn't get by without it. We knew that. But the thing of it is, is we were trying to cut things off that were, you know, that were, we thought was like ordering a new car with all the bells and whistles on it, or ordering a Chevy that you could just drive and go. But it's, it would come to a point where every dollar mean, and it still does. It still does to every one of us that are paying the bills, you know. I mean, we're all paying the bills that are sitting up here. It ain't like we're, like we're not, whatever that raises, raises my rate, too. And so it comes, what are you going to do? I mean, is it, that's why I wanted, you know, I see that up there where it says 32 or 22 and 12. But how much does it raise right now? Now, if we vote for this end, what will it raise up right now?
So it'd be the difference between the 12, 25? Is that correct?
Yes.
We would go to 14.56?
With Class A or without?
Without.
14.27?
14.27.
Classic, classic is increasing more than 1%, less than 1%. Like, it's a one dog.
So, so the, and, and the thing to keep in mind on the whole project is, this lift station is, the, the real driving force for all this is that lift station, and the amount that it has increased over this period of time. And we, we got sidetracked on the sludge. The real critical part is that lift station. And, you know, it's, it's regrettable that it didn't get done sooner, but this is the process that we've gone down through. I don't think anybody ever thought anywhere in this country that things would accelerate in costs the way they did over such a short period of time since COVID. And that's really where, where things have gotten so expensive. I know a lot of people are looking to do a lot of different things with wastewater plants and that, and they're just shocked. You know, we spent the 37 million dollars, but, you know, the treatment plant today is probably $60 million to get the same quality. Now, we could build something a little bit less and get by, but, so we were fortunate to get done what we did. But, you know, the real difficulty has been, you know, paying for what we originally did, because we were counting on a big user that had been using with us all along and has gone a different route. And I think that's what really put us in the tough spot, because we were not, we're not collecting enough revenues, so we're living off of what we had in reserves. If that hadn't happened, we'd probably have a way better spot, and this isn't such a big pill to swallow.
I know we need the lift station. Everybody knows that. That's because it's failing, and it's going to fail underneath the, the Rock River. And we all, I mean, we all understand that. It's just that every time we tell people that you're going to start raising their sewer rates, you know, there's going to be, you know, everybody's going to be disappointed. I mean, they're...
Keep in mind, it looks like we're kind of, with ones that Caroline has checked on, we're kind of in the middle. I mean, there's more out there you can compare to them. More than more that are less. But I do remember when we did that big initial rate way back when, when, when Duffy was here and whatnot, that, that was a big, big pill to swallow. That put us at the top of that bracket, of those, of those people and others around. I mean, everybody's like, wow, thank goodness, the boys got huge rates, so I can look at and say, I need some more money. And, and they used us as the example why they should get theirs up. I, I knew we had come down, you know, because everybody's gone up more. I just didn't realize that we had, we had gotten competitive again, or way competitive. But I don't think we want to keep going in that direction, but, you know, if, until things stabilize, or until we get the equipment up to par. And it's tough, because we've allowed things to go, most life of anything wastewater is 30 years, and a lot of things have gone past that. So we're working to catch up.
So the sludge deal is what?
Mayor, I was just going to note that in the event there is a consensus of council to, to do a rate increase, we would, our office would just need to know, you know, what the schedule is going to be and the time, and then we can prepare an ordinance, and it can be on the future council agenda.
But what's our timeline on this?
Something like this, that you place it, I know we don't do first and second reading anymore, but for something like this, it does make sense to place it on an agenda for council review, have it laid over to the next meeting, either that month or the next month, so there's time for public input.
Well, I definitely want to lay this over. You know, I mean, I don't want to come out with a consensus, because this is, this is all new to us, too, and we have to understand it before we, I mean...
It's on the agenda just as a presentation.
Yeah, I know.
Jeff, with the regulations that are on the Class B sludge, you see a time when that may be just all broke altogether, or priced to the point where...
Some of the regulations have gotten difficult for some of the communities to the point where, instead of land applying it on farmers' fields, they'll haul it to a landfill. Depending on what they find in it, some landfills might require it to be hauled elsewhere, not their landfill, because they don't want to deal with whatever might...
But it's definitely going to get more difficult.
No, yeah, everything gets more difficult. We get more regulations all the time, and not, not to get off sidetrack a little bit, but I, I remember 20 years ago, 26 years ago, when I started at the old timers, like, I've been doing this for 30 years, and I just can't wait to get out. Like, the regulations aren't that bad. I didn't think. Well, I start, I'm starting to think like they did back then. So it, it just piles up. It's not going to be easy.
So what, so what's it for Class A sludge? Now, how much is that? That 3. whatever million you had there?
3.7.
3.7 million? And then it's a lift station seven, so that's 11.4?
And those are just estimates. They could, I mean, and we're not, you know, we're just discussing it, but those are just estimates. It could come in, it could be a lot more, it could be the same, it could be a little less.
But that...
But that's the ballpark that we're shooting at.
All right. And is that the, that graph you showed us, is that what this is for 11.4? Or is it for less or more?
The, the rates.
You have both, Mayor. So following her question slide, there was another option, and yes, these are, yeah, these are, if you included the, the Class A, this is without.
And I had this map like this. If I explored this completely, this is where we end up with not a lot of change here in the minimum required. And because, this is because of the existing debts. I think that's the, one thing to pay attention to. Those new two, two potential loans are not going to be the big elephant. The existing debts are the issue. You have existing like high debts. So you did the math again, and this is what it would look like at its third one depreciation, so like 36% increase. So with and without, with this Class A sludge, not a huge difference. And that's what the rates look like here. This is for meters. That's if you included it, the worst case.
I spoke.
And this is without it.
I know. We'll have to, everybody up here has to...
So you've got a lot of hard thinking to do, a lot of things. I want you to know that I'm available... that I'm available by phone or in person to talk to any one of you about that. Or if you have a resident's question, do you want me to answer? Do you want to meet together? I'm happy to do that too.
Yeah.
You know, it's not an easy decision for anybody.
I think it would be important to maybe come with information about why we need the lift station, what the exact issues are, that maybe I sit up here and I know that the lift station isn't a choice. It's a gobby because of its current situation.
Right.
I think that's the education piece that needs to happen. I don't want to increase my bill, just like Tom doesn't want to increase and Brian doesn't want to increase his. At the end of the day though, what are we going to do? We have to do something. So I think we have to just make sure that we come with information.
So, and the terrible part is the lift station is what we need, but it brings out, as Caroline keeps pointing out, it brings out the fact that we haven't been charging enough selves enough to pay for the treatment plan. And that's what makes everything hurt so much.
I think, I think we can put a story together, and I see what you're saying. We need to deliver it to the residents in a way that this is a must, not like, oh, a choice, why don't we just do this fancy product, you know what I mean?
It's not like we're going and asking for a BMW when we can get by with a Chevy, right? Like, we need this. We need the Chevy.
Well, the reason we got stuck with a $37 million sewer plant is because they didn't do it 20 years prior. And this is the way it goes. And then when we got it presented to us back then, back when I was sitting 15 years ago or 12 years ago, where the hell was, we got sitting here, they said, well, here, you know, this was only going to cost you eight million if you did it eight years ago. Okay, and what's it cost us now? Oh, it costs you 35 million now. And this is what happens right there. It's just what we're talking about. Where, I mean, I know, nobody wants to look at that and say, hey, oh yeah, let's raise our hand, let's all get, raise our bills. But it's a point where it's a must to do it. And we got the lift station over on Bluff Avenue is failing and the pipe underneath the water is failing. And it's-
And I think too, you can talk about what the alternative is if we don't do it. What is, what is the cost of the state coming in versus the fines?
We can put all that together. Obviously, the first thing, if that does fail, we're trucking it across the river.
Trucking it like we did what?
Until we figure out a temporary solution with the new force main, which you're talking, just the new force main's really, really expensive, millions, millions of dollars, a couple million dollars, just to put it where it's at right now. And then you throw trucking in there. We're going to burn up the most of what we would need to do with the lift station just in getting by if we, if it fails before we can get something straight in our-
Just a stark reality.
What's that?
To be thorough, I'll tell you about the problem before it happens.
Well, we experienced the difficulty with that lift station, that force main. The force main got plugged on this with some debris, four years ago, five years ago.
Yeah.
And so we trucked, we did the trucking ourselves. Trucked, we had some difficulties, but we did it for, I think, five days or so. It was very difficult on the crew, but we knew we needed to step up and do it, it needed to be done. We had a contractor come in with an alternative idea, how to get it cleaned out, help us get it cleaned out. We got it opened up. We're, I believe we're on borrowed time and we need to get that force main corrected. We're moving the force main to shorten the length of the run, and we're doing away with two lift stations and going to one, where we'll create more gravity so we're less power demand. So we'll have some savings in the future for that as well.
Jeff, what does the EPA violation look like after you've been warned six years ago or so?
So, you know, discharging in the river is not a good thing. If, you know, if we were to violate, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe more, if they feel that we're-
Career?
No, for the violation. And if it continues, and they will come in, they will tell you what you're going to do to fix it. And it doesn't matter where you're getting the money from or how much it costs. You're going to do it. You're just going to, it'll be on property taxes and everything else until it's paid off.
Plus the resident aggression, right? You have a sixth thing, residents are going to get hit.
So if we lose that lift station tomorrow, I do not, I don't believe that'll happen. I don't want that to happen. We will spend the 7.7 million dollars in the process in between legal, between discharge, illicit discharge penalties, temporary corrections, trucking, you know, that money is going to be gone. And we're still going to have to do something, except somebody else is going to come in and tell you exactly how you're going to do it. Now, that being said, they might say, hey, you got a plan here, let's just get the plan done. But you're still going to spend that money plus whatever, everything else was. Now, that number gets, grows just because we, the money, money's already grown because we've been working through the process, maybe not as quick as we could then. And partially because, you know, everybody's afraid of that big dollar amount. It hurts. It hurts residents. It hurts people. We all experience it, but sometimes we have to, we can't drive that old car anymore.
Getting it down the road is only going to bring it up higher.
Yep.
Are we, are we expecting, if, let's say we get this done, what's our next big hurdle? I mean, there's got to be something in the future that we're, you're worried about or something. I mean, I like to know.
No, not that I'm aware of. We have an older lift station that I'm actually going to take the control panel from lift station two that we rebuilt. Must be around eight years ago. And we're going to move it over to the other lift station. We're going to use some of the products. You know me, I'm pretty frugal with what I have, and I like to reuse things that I think are better than what I've got somewhere else. So there'll be some possibility of that. But I don't have anything on radar right now. It's going to be a problem. I have some projects that we've talked about that I really want to see in the future for South Boy to grow in different directions, industrial, commercial, and residential. I can see that down the road, but we can get partners to help us if there's development, if we are ready for them and they're ready to come. So I don't see anything immediately, but obviously, all of our lift stations, not a single lift station's been built from the time I've been here, not in 14 years.
I know when I first came on, and it was five years ago, at one point, we had a conversation around some of the neighbors' kind of aging sewer plants, and maybe that being an alternative to help grow our revenue stream for ours. Has there been any discussion with those neighbors? Is now a good time to base approach then?
We can add to that if you want. Yes, there's three things, Mayor, that I think can change the trajectory. One is Jeff hasn't stopped having that conversation. The hard part is that no community wants to give up a utility, ever. So they're going to do whatever they can do to keep, to mandate, to get out of the floodway, to rebuild, to go through the 50, 60 million dollars it's going to take for them to build their own, because they don't want to give up a utility like we didn't want to give up water. So that's where that's at. The conversations have had, lunch has been had, you know, mayors have chatted, like, all those things continue to happen. We try to be a good neighbor to all of our partners that we can help. The two things that have to change, Jeff sort of grazed over, but the reason that we couldn't swallow these lift stations, you know, the previous rate increase maybe could have swallowed these if it weren't for two things. One, losing a major partner. You count on the partners you have at the table. When we lost that significant, largest contributor to our treatment plan, that right there probably should have done another rate study. You can't lose your biggest contributor of financial revenue and not, you know, feel the impact for that. Well, we absorbed it for a long time, but then here comes a five to seven million dollar project. You can't absorb that also without that major contributor. So growth has to happen, residential, industrial, commercial, all those things. You know, everything out east that has a potential to pop, has to pop. That saves us in the future when it's time for another lift station or a mixer goes down or you have something bigger or whatever. So it's growth and it's the, it's the cost of living over this last seven years. It's been astronomical. Since we raised our increase, there was a pandemic and a ridiculous amount of the cost of work, the cost of chemicals. You know, Jeff will tell you the chemicals that he has to have on hand are easily doubled than when we did this rate, migrate. So if you're seeing, you know, if your cost of living and the cost of doing construction doubles in a seven year span, you better do another rate increase study. You better not try to absorb it for seven years because, you know, that's the thing. But if we get some growth, we build that 80 acres or 100 acres, whatever's on Willow Brook, you know, that, that's our residential pocket, you know, that's 80 homes or more, 100, 100 to 200 homes, gosh, on a 100 acre shot, I don't know. But that pocket needs to be built out, which we did have for the first time, 20 some builds this year. So I mean, the residential piece is doing its part, and that's going to keep growing, but we need, you know, we need Willow Brook to develop. You know, that's how we save future 80 to 10 million dollar projects.
It's going to be-
It's hard.
Yeah, we'll have to, I want to make sure partner gets up.
Can we say one more thing?
Sure.
Caroline pointed it out. She's given us a tool to allow us to relook at our rates on a regular basis, so we don't end up in that spot again. And, you know, Fairground is giving us that tool as part of our package to do it. A lot of, a lot of engineers wouldn't necessarily do that for our community because they want to be able to come back and give you that package again when you don't do it in seven to 10 years. But we have it available to us every year, every three years, or every five years, however we want to look at it. So I just wanted to point that out. That was-
Oh, I, I know, I know it's, it's our future. It's what we got to do, but it's something that's not easy to swallow. And it's, you know, I mean, after you build a new power, or a new sewer plant, and then you add another 10 million on top of 11 million, it's not going to be that easy. But anyway, it's, anybody else got anything on this here? Caroline, I appreciate you coming here and explaining that to us. I, I'm not saying we understand it all, but we will, but we will sure go through it until we do, believe me.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, I guess, let's, need a motion to lay over, a, discuss approved ordinance 2848, amending chapter 18 business by adding article 12 residential rental property regulation. Get a motion, please. Wait a minute, whoa, whoa, whoa.
One moment. Motion to lay it over to July 7th. So that needs to be on the record.
Oh, to July 7th. Thank you.
Second.
We probably need a vote on this, don't we?
All in favor.
Okay, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes, carry. Okay, need a motion to lay over, discuss approved ordinance 2852, amending chapter 10 animals, articles two, dogs and cats, to April 7th.
July 7th.
July 7th. All right, get a motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody post? Okay, now go to new business, discuss approved motion items, discuss approved resolution 6624, approving the selection of the city's health insurance plan for 25 and 26. Okay, motion, please. Anybody, you got this?
I can trot it up and let Tracy play it up. I'm sure I won't be perfect, but in short, you know, the city of South Boy has always tried really, really hard to offer our employees the best possible healthcare package at the lowest possible percentage. You know, we have all worked in other places, worked in two other states. The package that we provide through Blue Cross and Blue Shield is absolutely a Cadillac package. That being said, the last five years, our employees pay 15%, the city pays 85% of that package. Over the last five years, every single year, it continues to go up at a pretty high rate. It's been between an 8 and 15% increase each year. That gets harder and harder to swallow. We have really great relationships with all of our union representatives and both unions that represent Public Works and our police department. So what we did this year was, we are continuing to offer a very Cadillac, Blue Cross, Blue Shield plan, but we did introduce to the unions that, you know, we really need to look at this in the future, the gap between reasonable healthcare and what Blue Cross, Blue Shield is doing in Illinois, that gap just keeps growing at a really rapid pace. So it's kind of on our horizon of, you know, how much longer can we afford this, this huge offering without getting more people onto a high deductible or, you know, an HMO plan. But we're there again. We're going to do it again, but we've asked the unions to consider starting in about August this year. So let's really dig into the education process and over the next 10 months, see if there are really some alternatives that our state can kind of shift to because the healthcare, the cost of decent healthcare. And I will say, you know, I'm a family of four, and I think everybody at Sable will tell you, we do have a Cadillac package. But when you are consistently kind of in that lower range of pay, you know, our neighbors could go, our employees could go to a neighbor, and we try really hard to let our healthcare package be something that's a token and we brag about. So we don't want to lose that, but at the same time, you know, it's an item for the next year. So we kind of look at that. But that's more than we normally talk about it. I know I probably went more than what we need to. This is a package that, you know, Tracy and I have probably spent the last six to eight weeks on, really digging in. And this year, we've been, of course, included our legal team to make sure that as we start to offer alternatives to our unions, that we make sure that we do it all at the same table respectfully as possible. But Tracy, anyone else need to be there? That's kind of it in a nutshell. Unless anybody has a question.
Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Ms. Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice, Mayor Mr.-
Abia, yes. Okay, discuss approved resolution 66285, approving a hotel motel funding application from nature of the confluence for an amount of $10,000. Motion, please.
So move.
Do we?
No, this amount is different.
Yeah, what's the amount for? I got 10,000 on mine.
This is 15.
The resolution is 15.
So I can explain that there were two different murals. I think at one point, Julie had talked about submitting one mural, application for the first mural, and then another application for the second mural. So I don't know where the numbers kind of fell apart. But the larger mural, that will be a looping crane on this building, is slated for about $15,000 worth of work. And then the smaller mural with die bond on the shed at nature of the confluence is about a $10,000. That already includes discounted rates from the artists that they've got booked up and all the materials. They are looking at, once the city makes a contribution of some sort, they're going to go to the auto bond and try to get some money. They're going to try to scrape some money from the nature of the confluence. And they also have a couple of local businesses that may be able to contribute some supplies that would be useful. So-
Don, how much we have in that hotel motel?
I think there's about 270,000.
Yeah. What else we using that for?
Basically, we pay, I think it's 15% now, or 10% to Boy as well as Rockford.
Rockford, and then we got the Wheeler House.
Yeah, they're a pretty normal ask. Nature of the confluence, the last couple of years has asked, and that's about it that I can think of off the top. And also, this has cleared our legal department, but this would be eligible expense.
Yes.
So 15,000, is that where we're going at?
It would need a new motion, but it's up to you. They asked tonight for 25.
They want a 25. Does that, what do you want? I don't, it's up, I-
It's about 25.
If 25 is what it takes to a private, I recommend the 25, now.
You recommend it? Well, hey, okay, I'm going to give this motion again, and I'll put 25 there and we'll see what happens. Discuss approved resolutions 6625, approving the hotel motel funding application from the nature of confluence in an amount of $25,000. Motion.
So move. Second.
Okay, discussion. I mean, this is a hotel, first of all, this hotel motel funding has, is regulations. There's regulations, how we spend this. And this is one of the ways we can spend that money. You just can't just hand it out to people. And this is for people that come into town and all this other stuff. So it's, it's a way that fills, fills the requirements, I would say, right?
It's a properly completed application.
Yeah, I read the application. That's right here. Yeah, we got all that. That's looked like all in good shape. So, all right, Tracy.
Ms. Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Prentice, Ms. Adelman?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss approved resolution 6626, approving a settlement agreement with Shawn Townsend. Motion, please.
So move.
Get a second.
Second.
Okay, somebody want to explain this one?
Jonathan's going to start. This comes with, from a code enforcement case from 2021, it was taken back. The original amount was 51,500. We did reach a settlement, or you guys did reach a settlement agreement for the property for 4,800. The property is in compliance, all but the, the last part of the-
Sorry.
You'll have to-
8,000.
I'm sorry, for 8,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
That's what I was looking at. So for 8,000, I apologize. The last part of the violations, the- So for 8,000, I apologize. The last part of the violations, the applicant has, or the Shawn Townsend, the homeowner, has gotten all of the permits through the building department, has had the inspections. There's one portion that needs to be finished, and I anticipate that'll be done by the end of July. But we will be checking on that.
All right, 'cause he's got 4,000 by the, June 30th?
Yes.
Another 4,000 by July 31st.
That's correct.
So what happens if he, what happens if he doesn't make these payments?
That he, if, we wouldn't release the lien on the property.
Do we go back to the 51,000?
Yes, I believe so.
I mean, this is agreement. We make an agreement with that.
This is the agreement settlement. We do have the lien for what I believe is 51,000.
Yeah.
That's recorded against his property still. So we won't release that until these settlement terms are met.
That's what we're thinking in four quarters at that point, most likely.
But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we brought up before here many times about these people that have owed us a lot of money, and then we settle for 10% of it or 20% or something like that. And it's, and then they come and they say we're picking on them or something. And here, they, they, they got the bill for 51,000, we're gonna settle for eight. So whatever. Just, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Mayor Mr. Trump?
Yes. Discuss approve retro approval of Fairgram to complete I dot call for projects at a cost not to exceed $4,800. Motion, please.
Second.
Uh, this is, okay.
So this was two meetings ago, we asked the city council for kind of a broad, general prioritization of some projects so that we could try to meet the June 1st deadlines for the I dot call for projects. We did that, and just off the cuff, Fairgram kind of gave us a number of, no matter what happens, no matter who needs to spend time on this project, it will not exceed 4,800. What you have in the package might seem a little bit confusing. It's a $2,000 scope of services. And that's basically because since two meetings ago, when they gave us a call around and we kind of asked for 4,800 not to exceed, to be retro approved, it has since come back and it's a $2,000 bill. So the agenda reads 4,800 because that's what we asked for two meetings ago. But now the work has already been done, the project has been submitted. It just didn't take the hours that we kind of gave ourselves as a precaution, just in case more expensive people at Fairgram need to be involved in the cost of that. Anyway, we were able to get all of our projects in, so the cost was $2,000.
Sounds good to me. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes. Discuss approve an agreement with American Sign Language interpreting. Motion, please.
Second.
Uh, chief.
The police department, this is just an efficient and professional way to talk to our hearing impaired citizens who came across the situation a couple months ago. It's just difficult to constantly write things out. And this lady is certified, the certified interpreter through the state. It's, it's on an as needed basis. Other than, I guess we're gonna pay $75 per year, and that's as needed relatively.
$75 retainer for the American Sign Language lady.
To take her call whenever needed.
When I first looked at that, it said Sonya on there. I thought she was moonlighting for another.
Mayor, I will also add that we have a similar sort of agreement, which is a language, various language to interpret. So this just offers another layer to that.
Go ahead.
We have to avoid.
Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Mayor Mr. Trump?
Yes. Discuss approve hiring. Hila, Hila?
Ella.
Ella? Ella Turin, Turin? Okay, not bad, I guess. The deputy clerk at a rate of $17 an hour. Motion, please.
Motion.
Discussion on that, go ahead. Tonya?
My only comment is that there are rules to honor a second deputy, which is, I think it's a little bit of a discrepancy in the environment. I think it's just more walking than writing, so it will be equally capable and it's gonna help that process.
Are we gonna, are cross training everybody up there?
We try, Mayor, but it's so thin. You know, it's hard, there's certain things Kylie can't do because she's directly, you know, involved with finances and bank accounts. And there's certain things Jennifer can't do because she's processing utility payments. So as thin as we are, we try. But yes, we, in a pinch, we have it now set up, we have SOPs for all of our critical primary functions, so that if anybody were to get by a bus, we're still gonna process billing, we're still gonna process payroll, we're gonna be able to do what we have to do.
Shona must have some free time up there, doesn't she?
Right? Yes, she must, a little bit.
All right. Tracy.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes, get a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
You're all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
No adjourn.